Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our October sixth Denellen Borough Council meeting. Our first order of business is a call to order and a rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Item number two on the agenda is the reading of the Sunshine Statement and Roll Call by Mrs. Lauren Stats, our municipal clerk.
This meeting of the Denellen Borough Council is called pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of October sixth, twenty twenty five was included in a list of meetings that was advertised in the Courier on January ninth, twenty twenty five, and as a teleconference was noticed on the official Denellen website on September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, and on the public bulletin board on North Avenue on September fourth, twenty twenty five, and has remained continuously posted as the required notice. Mayor Solento?
Present.
Council President Sigmund?
Here.
Mrs. Albertson here, Mrs. Lance?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
And Mr. Scott?
Here.
Um, before we move on with our agenda and go into business, um, I'm gonna kindly ask that we have a moment of silence for two individuals. One is Betty Ditter, who was a longtime volunteer with the Rescue Squad, and then also a moment of silence for our good friend, uh, council member Hal Vandermark. Thank you. Um, so I'm gonna just say a few words about both. I'm gonna start with Betty Ditter, um, who passed recently at the age of eighty-eight. She was a devoted nurse, beloved mother, and cherished member of our community. She dedicated her life to caring for others with compassion and strength. Proud graduate of Saint Michael's Nursing School, she served for decades at Somerset Hospital in Greenbrook Manor, positively impacting countless lives through her dedicated work. A loving wife to the late Edward Ditter and mother to Eddie, Beth, Peg, and Mary Allen. Betty's heart was always with her family. Her enduring spirit, service with the Denell Rescue Squad, and why we bring her up this evening, and unwavering support for her loved ones will never be forgotten. Uh, Betty Ditter was a life member of the Denell Rescue Squad, serving alongside Betty Byrd Doorward and Betty Berger. So, thank you, Betty, for your service and, uh, God bless you. Um. It's with deep sadness that we share the passing of Councilman Hal Vandermark. Uh, Hal was a dedicated public servant, uh, Navy veteran, a business owner, and a proud resident of Denellen for nearly four decades. Since moving here in nineteen eighty-seven with his wife Liz and his children, Joan and Hal Junior, Hal has been deeply involved with the community, giving his all every step of the way. He was a coach for the Denellen Recreation Baseball and Softball, volunteered with the Denellen Downtown Management Organization and the Denellen Arts and Culture Commission, and shared his love of the arts through the Inspire Art Gallery and Studio, which he opened in two thousand eighteen. And I know he impacted a lot of our youth in our town with expression of art. Hal was unanimously appointed to the Denellen Borough Council in two thousand twenty-one, where he served with passion, integrity, and a deep commitment to improving life for all who reside here. Whether it's through his roles with the Finance Committee, Office of Emergency Management, and CERT, Police Committee, or partnering with the Recreation Commission, Hal always put the people of Denellen first. He deeply loved this community, and we all appear know that he did, and gave everything he had up until the end. And, uh, I'll tell you, that guy is a fighter, and so is his family who fought alongside of him. He was a friend, a mentor, a leader, and a bright presence in the lives of all who knew him. He's left a lasting legacy that will never be forgotten. On behalf of the Borough of Denellen, we extend our heartfelt condolences to the Vandermark family and all who knew and loved Hal. And as we've noted over the past weekend, uh, all Borough flags will be flown at half-mast in honor until Friday in accordance with the Borough Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve. So, Hal, thank you for everything. Godspeed to you, my friend. Thank you for your service to not just the town, but to our country, and I think we should give him a round of applause. And I can hear him in his voice telling us to get on with business already, so let's get on with business. Um, item number three, uh, on the mayor's, on, is a mayor's appointment to boards, committees, and commissions. Uh, this evening, we're appointing Lori Welsh to the Library Board of Trustees. Uh, she's filling the unexpired term, which will expire on twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-eight. So, you got quite the tenure coming up, my friend. So, uh, Lori, if you wouldn't mind joining us, I will read your oath of office and, uh, yeah. Lori is a former employee of the Denella Library, so she comes with extensive experience for the organization. I know you're gonna do a great job on the Library Board.
Whatever you do.
Well, entirely up to you.
That's cool.
Do you want to apply? But again, right. A fact, a statement, a reaffirmation. I, Lori Welsh.
I, Lori Welsh.
Member of Board, Library Board Trust.
Member of the Library for Trustees.
solemnly swear.
Solemnly swearing.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That it was the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
In the same.
In the same.
And to the government Saturday.
The government established.
In the United States.
Under this. Under this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So, that's awesome. Yeah, we see that. So, this is your copy. This is our official copy. I'm just a copy, over ten. Thank you for all. One, sign, hold it. The record is one. Thank you, Lori. For a round of applause. Again, thank you, Lori, for stepping up to the plate, volunteering. Um, volunteers are the backbone of our community. That's how we keep our programs going forward and our town moving forward. And there's plenty of opportunities for those who wish to get involved and volunteer either in an appointed voting role or just volunteer with an organization outside of voting. Uh, you can visit our website, denellen-nj.gov, and fill out the volunteer application. So, thank you to all who step up to the plate and volunteer. Item number four on the agenda is Proclamations. First up is recognizing October as Substance Abuse Prevention Month. And that is going to Councilwoman Albertson to read.
I've seen most campaigns. What we've done with this campaign is trying to enable to be loved, obviously, to stereotype, to some associated with. And whereas, typically, any attitude or behavior that is completely against people, a policy, a drug, or a criminal, or a lack of, or a lack of change, the rule of camp. Whereas, substances use these orders that ultimately should not be defined by the code of conduct. Designized language is inaccurate, of personal disempowering, and want to do the parody which could have this cancer. Although, not because of cancer, this the harshing of that certain group that can affect anyone. People who use drugs are our neighbors, coworkers, relatives, and friends. People who use drugs need doctors, contractors, artists, who can help their neighbors. This Denellen holds a task for her reception and her people to start an operation about saving the hand. Whereas, there are many resources available for the campaign that also helps people. There's game and bank, they're looking to find some help and. And the community all have the role of play and rest, speaking updates by people who use drugs, stop this case. And therefore, we proclaim that Jason F. Solento, Mayor of the Borough of Denellen, with support from the Borough Council, he hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-five as Substance Abuse Prevention Month, Borough of Denellen, and call upon the people who are willing to join in supporting this conversation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, next up is the reading of the recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I believe Council President Sigmund will be reading this proclamation.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month began in nineteen eighty-five as a way to encourage women to get regular mammograms and has since expanded to spread awareness on treatment, research, and funding. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a time to support those affected by breast cancer, educate people about risk factors, encourage women to go for regular screenings, and raise funds for research efforts to find a cure. And whereas, one in eight women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime. And whereas, breast cancer is the most common cancer diagnosed among women in the United States and is the second-leading cause of death from cancer among women. And whereas, an estimated three hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty women and two thousand eight hundred men will be diagnosed with breast cancer in twenty twenty-five. And whereas, early detection greatly reduces deaths among those diagnosed with breast cancer with a five-year survival rate of ninety-nine percent when the disease is caught at the localized stage. And whereas, we recognize and honor the strength, resilience, and courage of survivors, those currently battling breast cancer, and the loved ones who stand by their side, and we remember those we've lost to the disease. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that Jason F. Solento, Mayor of the Borough of Denellen, New Jersey, with support from the Borough Council, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-five as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the Borough of Denellen and call upon the people of our municipality to join in supporting this observation and spread awareness for the importance of regular screenings and early detection.
Thank you, Council President. Next is, um, a proclamation recognizing Italian Heritage Month, also in October, and I will have the pleasure of reading that. Uh, whereas Italian Heritage Month recognizes the many achievements and valuable contributions of Italian Americans to the success of our country, especially in art, humanities, and sciences. And whereas Italian American Heritage Month was first celebrated in nineteen eighty-nine, year I was born, pretty good year, with, uh, Columbus, which would coincide with Columbus Day, which is celebrated on the second Monday of October. And whereas, over five million Italian immigrant, Italians immigrated to United States between eighteen twenty and two thousand, with over twenty-six million Americans of Italian descent residing in the United States today. And whereas, Italian Americans are the fifth-largest ethnic group in the United States. And whereas, Denellen proudly fosters a sister-city relationship with two Italian municipalities in the province of Piachenza, Volganoovo, Valdedone, and Castel San Giovanni to promote exchanges in education, cultural, recreational, and economic fields. And whereas, Italian American heritage offers an opportunity to explore and celebrate the diverse cultural traditions and customs of the Italian-American community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Jason F. Solento, Mayor of the Borough of Denellen, New Jersey, with the support of the Borough Council, do hereby proclaim October twenty-five as Italian American Heritage Month in the Borough of Denellen and call upon the people of our municipality to join in supporting this observation. So, um, a little plug, we are visiting the sister city in June of twenty twenty-six. If anybody's interested, personal visits, meaning the town's not paying for it, just so that's on record. If you're going, you're paying for yourself, but we will be visiting the sister cities while we're over there, okay? And I'll be paying for myself included, just so that's on record as well. I only say because the last time we went, it got questioned, so I just want to make it clear. Um, okay. Next up is item number five, uh, the approval of our meeting minutes from September fifteenth. So, do we have a motion in a second?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Scott. Are there any edits, comments, or redactions to the meeting minutes as they currently stand from September fifteenth? Without hearing any, we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Item number six on the agenda is our resolutions. We have Resolutions three forty-one through three forty-nine. Uh, Mrs. Lauren Stats, our municipal clerk, will read through them and give us an opportunity to ask any questions, make any, uh, comments, or have a discussion on them. So, Mrs. Stats, the floor is yours.
Resolution three forty-one is to pay the bills.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution three forty-two is to hire Kevin Cook as a school crossing guard.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution three forty-three is to accept the resignation of Travis Lambertson as Fire Subcode Official.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
I'll just note, sorry, I should have done it before, but I just want to thank Mr. Lambertson for his service to our community. Um, and, uh, we appreciate his work here while he was here, and we wish him the best in his next endeavors.
Resolution three forty-four is to hire Dana Downing as yoga instructor for the winter season for the Denellen Recreation Department.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution three forty-five is authorizing the award of a contract for professional services to CMA Associates to develop a local safety action plan.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Scott.
So, Mr. Miller, um, is there anything further we should talk about on this? Because we've discussed this at length over time. This is about the grant that we received for Safe Routes for All to, for the assessment of what sidewalks should compete, complete, and other safety measures for pedestrian safety and traffic throughout the town. And, uh, CMA Associates is a part of developing that process. That's what this is. Okay.
Here, I'll take a roll. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution three forty-six is to appoint Jonathan Jimenez to the Denellen Fire Department.
Move it, Sigmund.
Before we vote, thank you to Mr. Jimenez for stepping up to the plate and volunteering and, uh, looking to become a full-fledged firefighter. So, God bless you. Thank you.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Abstain.
Mr. Scott?
Abstain position in the fire department.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Jimenez. Welcome to the team.
Resolution number three forty-seven is authorizing the Chief Financial Officer of the Borough of Denellen to invest funds in the New Jersey Asset and Rebate Management Program.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution three forty-eight is to amend Borough depositories.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Scott.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number three forty-nine is to hire Phil Langen as Fire Subcode Official.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios?
Mr. Miller, would you like to speak about Mr. Langen?
Sure, Mayor. Um. Mr. Rios, I'm, uh, got about twenty-seven years of experience. We, uh, working inspections and, uh, working years of subcode official. So, I'm Jersey City, now works with the CNA. Um, yeah, sort of, uh, the subcode in, uh, for, for, for best nine years with Scott Russian, structural person. Scott, I'll say about this for a minute.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Miller? Okay.
All right. I'll take a roll. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Item number seven on the agenda is a consent agenda. We have Resolutions three fifty through three fifty-six. So, counsel, if you, I'll give you a moment to review, um, if you have not done so already, and just let us know if there's any specific resolutions to poll, to discuss. And if so, we'll pull them and then vote separately on the other ones. And if not, we'll just vote entirely on all the resolutions. Okay, without hearing any, well, can we have a motion in second on the consent agenda?
Move it, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Okay, item number eight on the agenda is Council Reports. Councilwoman Albertson.
Fire Department responded to thirty-six call services in September. Total calls in twenty twenty-five, three hundred and ninety-one. In September, they had four fire calls, uh, four EMS, two had met, or service calls, eight within ten, fourteen false alarms, a total of thirty-six. In addition to these emergency responses, they've also extended several meetings as well. On the eighth of September, they also met and parked in parks and roads. On nine eleven, participated in the, uh, nine eleven ceremony. Uh, picture, on nine twenty-four, the monthly fire department meeting. On nine twenty-seven, they covered the street fair. They also had helped in Middlesex, I lost that case there, but they helped in Middlesex, uh, covering for them while they had a project. Provationary and all members, uh, David Argentina and Jackson Rio, so completed his, this, we passed the ten-week long, um, Fire One and Fire Two Certification Training, helped at the Middlesex Fire Academy. And both attended the course that ran eight hours a day, giving up their summer to the cert, but, and you guys. They have now both applied to the New Jersey Division of Fire Safety for their certification approval. Provationary members, and Joshua Greer, have done their fire certification program and will be attending classes three evenings per week, the next twenty-five weeks, they get trained. They're also happy to see a number of residents continuing to join the Department of U.S. D.M.O.S. And they're still waiting for new members. If you're interested in joining, you're in sixteen and eighteen, you can become a junior member, a full member, uh, over eighteen. Visit their website, W W W dot Denellen F D dot com, or email join E F D at Denellen F D dot com for more information. EDMO, uh, the Harvest Fest is coming up, and this Sunday, and I understand we have over a hundred visitors, very excited. It starts at eleven AM, runs before, there's pumpkin decorating contest, apple pie, baking competition, lots of wonderful crafts and activities. So, please stop by and visit. The France is now a public library, their next open air market is Sunday, October nineteenth, with music by Tiny Cities, featuring Denellen musician Melissa Agnew and Mira, and Dennis King. Come support the friends of these all great national friends of the library. American Legion Post one nineteen has Halloween happenings, October eighteen, twenty-four, property, Austin contest for neon pumpkin decorated with supplies provided by the Legion, games and haunted mini golf, and more. Popcorn, hot candy, lemonade, and lots of prizes included in the five dollars per person for fifteen dollars per family fee. All veterans, as always, given free. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Rios?
Yes. Denellen Public Library, visit the library for afternoon art, musical storytime. We offer programs for teens, tweens, children, and adults throughout the month. Check out our website to stop by or stop by to see what's happening. Teens, don't forget Gaming Day every Thursday at three thirty PM. Denellen Board of Ed. A recent presentation, a recent presentation available on the district website explained the decision to eliminate honors classes in Lincoln Middle School. The changes aim to promote equity, balance, and high expectations for all students. Equity honors, equity meaning honors classes didn't reflect the school's diversity, no multilingual or IEP students, and fewer economically disadvantaged Hispanic students. The scheduling removing honors, balanced class sizes, removing honors balanced class sizes and create a space for new art and STEM courses and culture. The, the goal is to, is a school-wide culture of high expectations and opportunity for every student. Uh, this is available on their website under the September twenty-third Board Meeting Minutes. The next Board of Ed, the next Board of Ed meeting will be held on October fourteenth at seven PM. Buildings and grounds, a new exterior door has been installed in the OEM office. The most and most supplies will be relocated from Borough Hall. Public Works has completed the streetscape improvements at the Welcome to Denellen sign on the North Avenue, on North Avenue at the Middlesex border. TK One is working with Administrator Alex Miller on cybersecurity upgrades. The Borough has now reached basic and intermediate compliance levels, marking significant progress in security. And Parsa is continued, has continued to the cleaning phase of the Borough sewer mains as outlined in the current agreement. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Um. Councilwoman Lance?
Yeah, from the Recreation Department. The soccer program is up and running with lots of kids from preschool through eighth grade taking part. Denellen Recreation wants to give a big shout out to all volunteer coaches who made this season possible, helping one hundred fifty kids join in this year's fun. The Denellen Recreation Annual Senior Picnic happened on Friday, September nineteenth, and it was a sunny, fun-filled day for everyone who came. We're grateful to ma, to the mayor and council for their strong support of our senior programs. Special thanks to Mayor Jason Solento, Councilwoman Trina Rios, Recreation Commission Member Kathy Wilson, Recreation Commission Chair Jim Brennan, and residents Laura Murray and Jackson Rios for volunteering. Thanks also to Business Administrator Alex Miller for being there and supporting them. They're very super thankful to the Denellen American Legion Post, um, one nineteen for always hosting the picnic. The seventy-sixth Annual Halloween Parade is set for Sunday, October twenty-six alongside Founder's Day. You can register for the parade on the event day from twelve to one PM in the library parking lot. The parade kicks off at one PM from there and heads to Washington Memorial Park. As Denellen's birthday comes around, Denellen Recreation will mark Founder's Day on Sunday, October twenty-six at Washington Park from twelve to four PM. Founder's Day is going to be a lively town-wide party, bringing together residents and visitors for some festive fun. The event will have vendors, food trucks, live performances, kids, activities, and more, promising a good time for all. If you're interested in joining as a vendor or food vendor, please reach out to Recreation Director Kelly Cedar at kcedar@denellenborough.com, and that's all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council President, before I get over to you, I was, as you were talking about the school district's decision to remove middle school honors program, I was trying to pull up an email I'd sent to the school district. Um, I understand their, their point. I mean, in terms of why they, they did, I don't know if I necessarily agree with it on removing honors programs. Um, but I know parents had concern over it. Do you know if the school district, because you're the liaison, is, if they addressed those concerns to the parents?
And there were, uh, more parents who did stand up and felt their concern to that. Um, the reputation was, yes, we're negative.
So, their status quo without, with, okay. Um, basically, my recommendation was them to create a small parent task force to observe this new program. to observe this new program over the course of the year to see if between staff, administration, and parents think it's worth fully eliminating honors uh programming at over the course of the year and then see if it should be re-implemented or keep the program, new program as it currently is. So that was just so what, so you're aware that's what I had recommended, school district.
Honors, but not official honors. And the students are giving their homework in advance. They're giving a part of homework. At basketball, they love to do this. Long homework day, but it's a little bit more difficult.
Got it.
It's not labeled as.
Understood. Okay, well, I guess we'll see how it works out. Sorry. Council President?
Uh, that's all right. I fully support you saying all that. Thank you. Uh, so my report, we have the twentieth annual Walk to School Day on Wednesday, October eighth, beginning at seven thirty A.M. Participants will meet at the Saint John the Evangelist at three seventeen First Street or at Columbia Park to travel to Faber Elementary School together, walking safely and having fun. You're welcome to join us along the route if you do live closer to the school. Uh, for more information, please call seven three two four one eight eight zero two six.
Question, what was the date again?
Uh, it is Wednesday, October eighth, which is the day after tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. We'll see you out there.
We'll see.
And uh, that's my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman?
For DPW, they continue to routinely clean the downtown area, the parks and properties. Weekly lawn and landscape maintenance for the parks and properties, completed the street, streetscape work at Gallagher's Pump Station and the welcome sign of Denellen Avenue on North, Denellen Sign on North Avenue. Public Works Crew also began a similar project at the Welcome to Denellen Sign on Washington Ave, near the Denellen Greenberg border. They moved the planning board files to Borough Hall and O E M files to the O E M office. Uh, Crew is completing the curbside branch pickup for the year. Reminder that residents can still bring branches to the DPW yard. Curbside leaf pickup will run from October through December. The annual house, annual free household rubbish disposal started on September thirteenth and will continue through October eighteenth. DPW completed pothole repair work at Borough Properties. They serviced the police fleet and DPW fleets as they came due for maintenance as or breakdowns arise. And they serviced the DPW lawn mowers and leaf blowers. That's my report.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Could you bring up with the DPW Committee in a subsequent subcommittee about the recycling bins and what the county advised us if we wanted additional ones for each resident, and there's a cost to it associated with it, and see if they would recommend a program around it? Thank you.
Very awesome. We started also.
Senior grass pickup, yeah, yeah. So there's some stuff being thrown over to DPW Committee. Okie doke, my report, Second Street Project, the enhanced striping was just completed along with the speed radar signs and R R F Bs at the intersection of Second Street and Sanford Avenue. New Jersey American Water is scheduling a contractor to mill and pave the section where the water service repaired took place. Um, because unfortunately, they redid a road under the grant that we got. And uh, there was a water, was a, wasn't a water main, it was a lateral water service bunch unfortunately was damaged. So American Water to come in and repair it, but underneath our ordinance, they're required to fully pave that section of the road. So it'll, it'll be just like it was brand new and they have to re-stripe it too. So uh, Jackson Ave, the Mill and Pay phase was completed, as was the initial street striping from the Middlesex County Shared Service Agreement. Uh, so note, any striping prior to the project must be replaced. Our striping contractor will be coming in this week to install the enhanced striping, which will include no parking box outs at each intersection, parking stalls between North Ave and Front Street, twenty-five mile per hour painted on the streets as well as rumble strips. So some enhancements coming along to Jackson Avenue. Uh, New Jersey American Water Service Installation Milling and Paving uh in the spring of twenty twenty-six. So New Jersey American Water will continue installing water services on New Market Road. And uh, they've informed us that the borough, the borough, that all the streets that had new water service installed this year will be milled and paved in the spring of twenty twenty-six. So Laura, you're getting a new road after all of this. Soon enough. Uh, to avoid weather-related risks during the fall and winter months and allow for a necessary ground settlement period, period ensuring a higher-quality pavement surface with greater longevity to avoid weather-related risks during the fall and winter months and allow for necessary ground settlement uh period. Um, so uh, just so you're aware, if it went a little too late in the year with how cold it was, the asphalt wouldn't stick. And so they'd be back in next year redoing it. So best that we just hold off. They'll clean it up as best as they can to make it a nice, smooth road in the current, current conditions, and then they'll be back in the spring. Um, they'll also be milling and paving the two hundred block of Penfield Place in Maple Avenue in the spring. Um, they had to bring the contractor back to properly repair eight sewer services on Penfield Place due to the issues with unsatisfactory paving sections in twenty-four. Uh, they'll also be providing notices to residents for all these projects before they begin, and they have to fix that section of Oak Parkway that they did with painting and no, a, a school crossing, school zone, and there's no school in that area, and then tore up the road to put twenty-five miles per hour on it. So they gotta come back and fix that too, make sure they do that. Uh, lead pipe inspections, New Jersey American Water and Montana Construction have begun lead services in Denellen. Uh, this part, this is part of a statewide initiative that will be completed by twenty thirty-one. And Denellen is one of the first municipalities to start. Always great to be the first out of the gate. Their team, uh, their teams may request access to homes to inspect water service lines. However, recently replaced lines or lines that are already scheduled for replacement will, will not require inspection. Um, which is basically most of the town at this point. Uh, they may place markouts on properties as part of the inspection process. So uh, if you have a concern, you can please call seven three two nine six eight three zero three three. Or you can send a council member or myself an email. My Borough cell phone is seven three two eight eight two four five five one. So you can reach out to us. You can get your news from, and the information from Borough Hall. And uh, you know, then, then put out it out, put it out on Facebook. Don't go to Facebook first, come to us first, then get the information and then go to Facebook. So this way it's factual. Uh, weekend events, uh, you heard it all. Uh, we're having an exciting weekend ahead, a haunted trail, Harvest Fest, Washington, at Washington Memorial Park, Denellen uh Station Car Show uh at the Denellen Train Station. So please join us for a fun-filled weekend. Um. CME Reports, uh, NJ DOT ADA Approvements, uh, CME, who is our engineer, contacted the Department of Transportation regarding the installation schedule for the pedestrian R R F Bs, uh, NJ DOT has indicated that the installation is expected within approximately two to, no, these are already installed. Sorry. Oh, yes. So they're going to be turned on within two to four weeks?
Yes.
Okay. Washington Ave Street Lighting, CME is also awaiting the electrical plans requested from NJ DOT to confirm whether the department owns the illuminated signal ahead sign. So during discussions this week, the Department of Transportation indicated the plans are forthcoming. If the sign is not included in the electrical plans, the contractor is prepared to remove it. Uh, CME understands the borough would like us to keep the standard do not block driveway sign installed in its place. So if you go underneath the bridge going towards North Avenue on Washington Avenue, you'll see before you hit the Par Building, which is Mike's Subs, there's a sign that says do, uh, basically stop here while red light, don't, so you don't block the ingress egress for the parking lot. Uh, the DOT is looking to take it down as part of the read of the, the projects that we're doing over there. Um, the light installation and we're, we're pushing back, saying that we want it back installed, whether it's in that exact same location or not, we're pushing to have it back installed. Strip joint site, which is the, the old, uh, six thirty-five Bound Brook Road. Uh, supplemental environmental investigations are ongoing as required by the EPA and NJDEP. Contamination has been identified on adjacent properties. Our engineers are currently preparing cost estimates for the additional remediation work, which will be submitted to the borough upon completion of all supplemental testing and investigation. So uh, progress is being made on that site. It's the future site of the rescue squad. Um, but uh, you know, it's when you deal with contamination, you have to be very careful. So it's gonna be a little while. Um, and then I will conclude with uh congratulating Patrolman Brian O'Neil, who celebrated his retirement with the Borough of Denellen Police Department on October first. Patrolman O'Neil has proudly spent his career here in our Miracle Mile, his hometown, following four years of service to our country, the United States Marines. He has served Denellen with integrity, professionalism, and dedication. We wish him a happy and healthy retirement and thank him for all that he's done for the department and our community. So round of applause for patrolman. That's it for me this evening on my report. So there are no council discussions. Number ten on the agenda is department heads, legal, anything. Okay, I T. I T-ing it over there. Good job. Clerk registrar?
Yes, just some information about the election. Uh, for the general election, the voter registration deadline is Tuesday, October fourteenth. The drop box at the library is now open for residents to drop off their mail-in ballot. Districts one and two are at the Senior Center. Districts three and six are at the Firehouse. Districts four and five are at the Public Library. And if you're unsure of your polling district, you could visit the Denellen, um, the New Jersey Division of Elections website and type in your polling place in search bar and enter your address and zip code. If you have any other questions, you can call the clerk's office at seven three two nine six eight three oh three three and ask for me. Or you could email Eldar at Denellen Borough dot. And that was it.
Okay, thank you. Administration?
Uh, it is there, uh, on the side. We're just talking about. Not from your minds, your interviews, you know, hopefully we know about the usage, but in case we ever had a cyber issue with our new uh standings, we're going to have ninety-five thousand dollars deduction. This really, this, that's like, oh, my God. Um, also, I'd like to thank you, uh, Mary Sando, on working with our federal and state uh, duty carries on getting that um, safe street law, they're going to do a real thing, big, big quote. Thank you for a question.
Well, you're welcome. It's also the, the mayor's traffic and uh, safety pedestrian task force sits along titles, M Taps, that's what they're, that's what their abbreviation is. So kudos to them as well for helping us get some stuff together for that as well. You're gonna, yeah, you're the focus group for it. So you're always asking for things to do. You're gonna have a lot to do.
You're welcome.
Um, anything from DPW's perspective, superintendent?
Sir?
Anything from DPW superintendent?
We'll follow.
Perfect.
Delta, seeing as where it's grass or.
Thank you. Detective Sarge, anything from P D?
This is touch on the lit sign talking about, or I think it'd be not blocked driveway would probably be preferable there. Um, what you end up getting a lot of times for people that see you stop here on red and then everyone stops three hundred feet short of the intersection, not only do they not block drive, but they also, they'll go to the next, you know, two hundred, if you need a little confused, I'm gonna think I did not block progress, but there.
Okay, so just bring that back to CME if you wouldn't mind, Alex. Thank you. Anything else, sir?
No.
Okay, thank you for your service. Mr. Cummings, anything from O E M Certs?
Thanks, Alex and DPW for helping to jump up the materials to do all this, it's could take a while there to get a transition, but we're moving ahead.
Okay, great work. Thank you. Okay, no other department heads. So at this point, we'll open the floor to item number eleven on the agenda, which is public comments. Uh, the microphone is right here. We kindly ask that you step up, you state your name and residency, and uh, we're here to listen to your concerns and answer any questions you may have.
Carl Peter Clapper at one thirty, Front Street, Department two L. Uh, and uh, my main concern is uh, an issue that confronts uh, both my current and my past neighbors and the issue of the mortgage evil. Uh, which has been highlighted from uh, comments and uh, papers and particularly Political Science Quarterly back from the late nineteenth century. Uh, the problem with the mortgage is that it increases the price of uh residents and it also increases the price of storefronts uh, by leveraging uh, people's bids. And the evil part of it is the restriction of bids to those who are quote-unquote qualified to make a bid. So that's a uh uh, restriction of the market that artificially inflates uh, those costs and particularly onerous for uh my friends and neighbors who have uh, had to deal with uh, the huge uh price of uh not just the uh, housing itself, but also, you know, through the mortgage and also the expenses that uh, small businesses face. Because their uh values for their assessment is artificially inflated. So I just wanna put in my ongoing objection to the mortgage and uh, continue my call that we abolish the mortgage with a permanent moratorium on new mortgages. This would not affect the uh, existing mortgages. And people would uh, face no particular change there, but they would find that uh they're not getting uh, forced out of residences and forced out of businesses by various uh, real estate speculators. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clapper.
You know, uh, uh, I issue my uh condolences to Hal and his family and all who have been, who have known him.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public? We ask that you kindly uh, state your name and uh, address your residency and uh, we're all ears. Anybody online? Okay. Last request for anybody in the public? Okie doke, we will close item number ten on the agenda, which brings us to item number eleven on the agenda. I apologize. Item, which brings us to item number um, twelve, adjournment. We have resolution three fifty-seven. Uh, can I have a motion and a second, please? Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Scott.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, thank you, everyone. Our next meeting-